The time. Recording has started. We don't have Allison and Allison said she'd be here.
She's definitely coming and I believe that Maren Goldstein, the Chair of the Finance Subcommittee is also coming.
All right, I don't see. All right, first subject is the minutes you sent out, very nicely done. However, I don't want to deal with those. I think Omar should weigh in on them, so we'll deal with them next meeting, if that's okay.
Yep.
And the other thing is public speak, but I don't think Lindsey or Jen, you're not considered public, so we're not gonna. Why is Emily here? Oh, debt and interest, maybe?
And unclassified.
Okay, all right. All right, well, I want to move on with the schools, but I can't do that if I don't have Allison.
Is the mayor coming?
Well, she knows about it. I don't really just go out and tell everybody to come.
It feels like it's a big deal.
It is a big deal, but on the other hand, they're all adults, so. Dale, maybe you can text Allison and say, hey, did you forget?
On our way out of the building, we both said, see you at five, so I know.
Oh, she's on her way home, maybe?
No, no, she left in plenty of time to be home.
Hi, Jen.
I will text her.
We are in the meeting, but I'm just waiting a little bit on schools. Emily, hi, where are you?
Hi, I'm here, I'm getting set up.
I thought you were on vacation someplace.
Oh, not yet, no, tomorrow I'll be on my vacation, so.
Okay, cool. You're here for unclassified or for the benefits and that? Okay, good.
Yeah.
Well, you know, maybe we just go into those, Peg. What do you think? What's going on in classified?
Yeah, might as well.
All right, we're gonna go into unclassified, Dale, until she gets here, so I'm gonna share the screen with that budget.
I texted her.
All right. Um, I had to school up. Let me get to unclassified. Okay, these are the areas that are being dealt with. Everybody sees this, I hope?
Yep.
Yes.
So I have, I think it's nothing but good news. Number one, 32B is not up. How do we keep keeping our premiums down, Jen? It's just amazing to me.
That would be a question for Emily.
Yeah, actually, the Hampshire County Trust, they're the ones who distribute our rates each year, and they were able to work with Blue Cross Blue Shield to decrease our HMO rates by 2% this year.
I jumped ahead, so let me just go through. This is the overall budget for retirement, and it's up $2 million or more than that, and I assume that's because of the standard. I never understood retirement as much as I should, so why is that up, Jen?
It's, well, first of all, it's up 200,000.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
Wait a minute.
I meant to say thousands. Ignore me.
That's okay, that's okay. Um, this, this figure is actually something that PIRAC comes up with based upon our, like, um, I'll say assessment, I don't know, I can't remember if that's what they call it, but like, they take in all our numbers, Kimmy has to give them this full report, and then based on that, there is actually a like a notice that explains the process, which might be helpful to include, you know, in the budget book or whatever, but, um, but they, they come up with this. This is kind of like, this is what we need.
And I asked a question for that reason, because if people go in and look at this recording, like, I want to know, what does this mean? And one of the most important things to say is, this is a fixed dollar amount. We can't cut that without
Correct.
doing something to our retirement system, so.
Correct. Yep.
So any other questions on retirement, Peg? Moving on, workers' comp. We went down a few thousand. Is that because we have less staff? Why does it go down, or premiums are down? Or is that Emily?
Emily, sorry, Emily, I was just gonna say, it looks like it's the 111F that went down, which is strictly, um, public safety. So, I mean, I don't know.
I don't know why I'm questioning why it went down. So don't worry about it. I'm just happy it went down.
No, it's a valid question, but, um, yeah, I mean, it's one of those things where they, you know, rates are determined based upon our workers' comps, comp audits, so.
Okay. Moving on, you don't have any questions, do you, Peg?
No.
Medicare is fixed by the amount of employees and by the federal government, correct? So we have nothing to say about that, except that we have to approve it. Okay, moving on. Employee benefits, this is the biggie.
Yes.
It's amazing to me. This is what I, what I was alluding to before. We're down, it looks like $7,000 in a premium for healthcare. All other healthcare is going up. You were starting to say something about the trust and what's going on there? Are we not using it as much? Is that why it's down?
We decreased our premium by 2% for both Medex and for HMO. So across the board, it went down by 2%. We don't necessarily have an increase in employees either. If anything, I'm working on tightening the policies in regards to retiree benefit enrollments, so.
I have to say, it must be also, isn't it based on risk? Maybe they looked at our numbers for claims. Peg knows a lot about this.
No, I don't.
Not, I don't know how the Hampshire County Trust does that, but it's across the board for all their municipalities, so I don't think it's anything reflecting directly on us.
And the other, the other insurances are up a little bit, but overall, we're down from last year.
If, if, if I may, I had some experience with the friend that insurance trusts when I worked in another district as superintendent, and they decide rates based on the financial health of the trust year to year as well.
Oh, I know that, yeah.
It could be that they feel like they're in the position to decrease rates because their financial health is so good.
Yes, yeah.
I think they've stated that in the past.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's good. This is very good news.
Can just jump in on the, um, the bottom three, the OPEB, City School and Enterprise. Just, just to kind of put it out there, this just went, the increases here are based upon our policy, which is that it, the amount that we contribute will increase by 10% each year.
Okay. I have no other questions on this, except to say I'm elated. Peg, do you have anything?
Um, just for clarification for anybody watching this, Chapter 32B, is that part of, is that a reference to an MGL about retirement dollars? Is that what 32B means?
I believe it's a reference to an MGL about health insurance.
Yeah.
It's health insurance for both retirees and regular employees.
Right.
Yeah, and school employees, school retirees are treated differently based on their contract than a city retiree. Is that fair?
No, well, not when it comes to.
Why are there two separate lines?
Well, wait, so there's the, they divide them up into different accounts, but it's all the same, like, they all get the same rates. So there's no change in the school rates versus the city rates. They're just all different line items.
It's just to be able to break it down between city and school.
Okay, but it's all the same dollars.
Yeah.
Per, per person.
Yeah.
Yeah, healthcare is distributed to all employees the same. I mean, premiums are the same.
Yeah.
And all of the benefits are the same.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Any, anything else, Peg?
Nope.
Moving on, liability insurance. It doesn't seem that high to me. This ensures us in a lot of ways, if we're sued by somebody, former employee or something, right? Who can answer that? I mean, it seems, it seems like it should be higher, given we have a lot of employees and we're a city with a fairly large budget, but I'm just curious.
Um, I believe the liability can go to, like, our auto claims and our, like, general liability for building, any kind of, you know, anything that happens if, like, one of our trucks hits another truck or something like that. And then they just break that into the city and the school side as well.
All right, because it says city liability, it says school, all right. I was just curious, it seems.
Yeah, and they base that probably off of two, like, how many buildings school has and how many vehicles they have and stuff like that, as opposed to.
Does it relate to lawsuits, say, I wonder?
Um.
Somebody slips and falls on the school property and they sue us or something?
I want to say that yes, that would come out of like a general liability claim.
Okay.
It would be under the same thing, but we just pay a deductible for that, and then that's it.
You pay a deductible per claim?
Depending on the claim, like, we pay our overall coverage, so like, if any accidents that happen, like, if we, I don't know, had a city tree fall on someone's yard or whatever, we just send that over to the claims people. They don't charge us for that. We don't pay for that. But if we have, like, a lawsuit, we pay deductibles for lawsuits.
Okay. You have any questions, Peg?
Nope.
Moving on. The reserve fund, we always put some money in here, it's 200,000. This allows transfers in the budget to any other budget that is short during the year. It's another way, plus free cash, plus any of the stabilization accounts that we can help the budget if we need to. Is that a fair statement there, Jen?
Yes.
Okay. And what's left? Unemployment. We are self-insured unemployment-wise, right?
Yeah, we pay our own claims.
So we put $75,000 in this budget to cover anybody's unemployment, if they're laid off or something?
I think it's just an average number that they do every year, and then I think it kind of like carries over every year. So if we have any leftover from the previous year, we can apply it towards the next.
Oh, I don't think so. Chen?
I, this is an expense account, so it doesn't, this particular account doesn't continue to accrue.
It doesn't roll over?
No, but I do believe that there, there is, I'll have to look. I believe that there is a revolving account that could be used as a supplement to this if there were, you know, either a large amount of, of unemployment claims over the course of, of the year or, um, you know, a really large one, I guess, but this particular account is not.
Wait a minute, say that again. We have an unemployment, like, stabilization fund or some kind of?
No, not stabilization. I believe it's a revolving fund. So just meaning that that's where we could, we would be saving money towards.
That just stays, that, oh, if I'm hearing you right, if there's a, if there's any surplus in this account, it goes right into that revolving fund? It doesn't become free cash?
Uh, that I would have to check on. I'm not sure how the money in the revolving fund has, has gotten there in the past, right? Exactly. I don't know if it's something that has just been there, or I don't believe that this 75 goes in if it's not used, and I'm pretty sure that this gets used every year.
Okay. Yeah, and it comes free cash if it's not. All right, do you have any other questions, Peg, on the unemployment budget? Okay. All right, we're done with classified. Does anybody have anything? Mayor, I saw you jumped in, if you have anything on this. We jumped to this section because we were waiting for Dr. Leclerc, who was a tiny bit late.
Um, no, I have no comment, and apologies for me being a tad late as well.
Okay. All right, uh, we're gonna move on to schools now. Dr. Leclerc, welcome.
Good evening, thank you. I'm, I'm sorry I had trouble getting in on my, it was a problem on my end, so I apologize.
Well, I'm glad to hear that, because I'm in Pennsylvania and I was so worried about it, but it works. It's amazing how the internet works all over the world. So I am gonna jump to, there's two areas. Let me tell you how I want to do this. Let me jump to the cities' numbers. What I'm gonna do, Dr. Leclerc, is ask that you say anything you want related to the narrative that's you presented in the budget. We'll go over these numbers. And I have a few questions, and then we're gonna go into the budget appendix we have, because I'd like you to go over those. And a lot of this is for the public. I have one question, because you did supply us with the COVID grant, uh, information. I'm very appreciative of that, and we're not gonna get into that now. We're gonna do that quarterly and we'll get into that in another time. But I do want to ask a couple of questions on that. Number one is, any of that grant funding and the funding coming from the Rescue Act, is that restricted to certain spending, like, you have to use this money for technology? Is there restrictions or are you free to put it where you have holes in the, your needs?
Well, uh, right now, we have, um, so there's a couple ways I can answer the question. S R 1 is money that already came to us for this current year, and we've spent it. We didn't have, we had a few restrictions on that, that we needed to spend it for COVID-related items that we needed, but it gave us broad, um, flexibility in how we determined COVID-related, like, if it was to, to increase staffing because we had students in remote learning, or if it was technology or supplies that we needed because we were in remote learning. S R 2 is the money we'll apply for next, for next year, and there are some caveats associated with it. Every school district is mandated to spend at least $10,000 of that funding on mental health for students. And we are, there's a formula for, um, extended day services, which can either be interpreted as before and after school or summer school programs, and that equates to $140,000 of our money that needs to be set aside for programming to help students that need remediation support. Beyond that, there are just parameters around PPE that we can use the funding for. It doesn't tell us what PPE, but it allows us to spend it on PPA, PPE, staffing needs, technology, infrastructure. So there are categories that we can spend it on. Uh, we are, and, and the next pool of money that we know is coming after that will be S R 3, but we don't have the allocation amount yet, and we don't have any parameters from the federal or state government around how that funding can be used.
Thank you. And again, I'm asking these questions so the public is informed if they should see this. The approval process for spending, unlike a lot of areas, you have an elected, uh, school committee. Do you need to, before you decide you want to spend it on PPE or something, does the school committee weigh in on that and say, go for it, or isn't, there is no, it's, it's up to the superintendent to decide, and you report it to the school committee, of course, what you do.
Yes, so the, so we have to, when we apply to access the dollars, we have to describe how the dollars will be used to the Department of Education.
And that's the State Department of Education?
Yes, because the money is funneling through them. So they would look at our application and determine if there are areas that are unacceptable, or if we're trying to put too much money in one area and not another area, they would call us up and say, you need to, you need to resubmit that, you need to make some changes and resubmit that. So that is determined, um, through the approval process, and then they also, um, get monthly reports from us. And of, there's an amendment process. If we need to switch lines on anything, if we, if an expense is higher than we thought and we need to shift money from another line to cover that expense, we have to go through the Department of Ed for an amendment and get that approved. And then there's, um, when we're finished with the grant funding, we have to then submit a final report to the Department of Education. And then, uh, another layer up in the school department is we're also audited by an outside auditor on all our grants.
And that's separate from Scanlon and our city auditor? That's somebody else that's provided by the DEP or something, or?
Dale, I don't know who the, I don't know who our person is, but.
It's okay, I, it doesn't matter. Okay, uh, just as I said, I saw Omar come on. We're not gonna get into this too much. I just wanted to ask those very informative answers to Dr. Leclerc. I appreciate that, because it, it lets the public know that there is checks and balances on all this money and that, how you're using it. And as I said, we'll get into that later on. Maybe at the end of the summer, we're gonna go into both city and school COVID grant funding on a quarterly basis, because it comes in that way. Peg or Omar, do you have any questions on what I just did, or we're gonna get into the budget? Nothing?
I'm, I'm here, but I'm not, um, I'm not gonna participate. I'm just listening.
Okay. Uh, his reasoning is because his wife works for the city, the school department. Okay.
Dan, Russ, can I make a quick, just comment on that, too?
Sure, Marion.
So I just want to also point out that the, the Finance Committee, while we're not earmarking, so, I mean, we don't determine those expenditures, on a quarterly basis, we do do a review of all budget expenses with Dale and Allison, and that will include the COVID spending on those grants as well, so that we do do quarterly reports, uh, to watch our funding throughout the fiscal year.
Thank you, that's very good. So Dale, I'm sorry, Dale, Allison, I just wanted to start with you, to start with, um, the, the budget as submitted, uh, for the city's general appropriation of, what is it, 17,97,000? And you could go into any of the, as I've done with all the department heads, I've asked them to go into the narrative, goals, trends, anything that you wanted to say about your, uh, about the department, and then we'll go into the numbers, and then I'm gonna go into the numbers as you've supplied in your very detailed budget that's in the appendix. So go ahead, if you want to say anything about the budget.
Sure, so I've done, um, a presentation to the, um, school committee during our public hearing, and you know, I think that it goes without saying, like, other departments, I'm sure, we've had a very challenging year in the school department. Uh, we were in remote learning. You know, we have had to keep the doors open in a sense that we still needed to educate children throughout the past year, academic year. So things really couldn't miss a beat for us. We had to shift the way we were doing things and come up basically with a whole new education system. And, uh, it was extremely challenging for school districts across the state, but it was imperative that we pivot very quickly and, um, kind of get the kids to a place where they felt safe and comfortable and they had established routines. So I, you know, I commend the, um, adults that work in the school district, you know, our educators, our custodial staff. They've just done tremendous work this year during very challenging times. And, you know, I think that the budget we've put forward is not the ideal budget that we would want to put forward to you. It's another uh, year of not really having any growth, and for a school district, that's, it's not good to stagnate. You know, we really do want to grow our programs. And we're fortunate to have a beautiful new school coming down, um, the pike in the next year, and that will be wonderful, but we want to make sure that the staff and the programs that we have in that building are really top-notch. So, uh, you know, this budget is, I, I think probably appropriate for the times that we're living in. I wish it was, you know, I wish it was a little bit higher. I don't think that's a surprise to anyone. Probably every department head wishes that. But we're doing the, what we can, and we're trying to, um, use our COVID funds in creative ways going into the next school year. You know, I, I, I want people to know, and I can reflect back on this during the section, Dan, where you want to go a little bit deeper into the COVID grants. But this past year for the S R 1 funds, we had, um, between S R 1 and CARES, uh, we had, uh, over $500,000, and it was gone in the blink of an eye to pivot to a fully remote program. And, uh, you know, it wasn't really on anything frivolous, but it was to get manipulatives into each student's hands at home, things that they used in groups in school, or books that they would once share in their, in their classrooms. They now needed each individual sets or online curriculums that we never had before, because we've been so lean in East Hampton. We had to get all of those things, so it ate up the money so quickly, so. I'll, I'll just take, I'll stop here and I'll, I'll open it up to whatever sections you want to start with, and we have Dale here this evening, our business manager. We have Maren, the head of our, um, Finance Subcommittee of the school department, and so we're, hopefully, one of us can address any questions that pop up that you might have.
All right, this is the general budget. It's one page, because the school committee has authority on how this money is spent, but I have one question. This is the amount of educators you have, this line, you see my cursor? It's highlighted, and it's down nine people, and I'm wondering, is that because people didn't come back? We don't have any layoffs, do we?
We laid off people in the last, at the end of the last academic year, because budget, with our budget, we needed to do some layoffs. So there were some layoffs, um, then, and this year.
Twenty, that's this figure to this figure, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm just curious about this figure to this figure, this year.
So we have, in order for us to provide a, um, kind of a level service budget, well, not level service, but in order for us to get to a 2.5% decrease, we had to, um, look carefully at our positions. And we have some positions that we are just not filling, um, for people that are leaving. Yep, people that are leaving, we're just not filling positions. We're looking at, um, consolidating some classes. We're hoping that, you know, our kindergarten numbers, we don't have big numbers in kindergarten. We lost about 100 students because we remained in remote learning this year for most of the year, so we had some students that we lost to private schools that remained open because families had childcare needs, so we need to decrease some of our education staff. And, you know, I don't know whether those students will return or not. We'll have to wait and see. But we've also, you know, thought about, you know, any other positions that we can live without, and I, I don't know. Dale, did you, did you have any specific ones that you can add to the conversation?
No, other than what you've, other than what you've talked about.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, uh, yes, yeah.
Peg, do you have any questions?
Yeah. I do. So the other individual contracts at the bottom of 9.4, what are those positions or people going to do? Are they gonna fill in for educators?
Individual contracts are, currently, we have, um, an occupational, occupational therapists are in individual contracts. Speech and language pathologists are in individual contracts. They provide services to students. We also have, um, CODAs, which are occupational therapy assistants that work under occupational therapists. Those are individual contracts. Some of our special ed, um, facilitators are individual, those are individual contracts. They're not in the union contracts, so we have to have them individually. In our IT, two people in our, no, one person in our, two people in our IT department are individual contracts, our, um, our technology technicians. The technicians are individual contracts.
And did you find, Dr. Leclerc, that over, as we move to the new school, I think it's gonna be mid-year next year, as we move to that, in the formulation of your budget, were there opportunities to combine things, because you're all gonna be in the same building? Do you need fewer custodians? Cuz you're all gonna be in the same building, do you need fewer custodians or fewer I T staff? I'm just curious if, how that plays out?
So next, this, this coming school year, in January, the middle school will walk from Whitebrook and, and move into the new school. None of the other buildings will move into Mountain View in January. They won't move in until the following September. So we won't consolidate any services really next, this coming school year. Um, because all the staff will just move over into the new middle school.
Okay, gotcha. Uh, I'm, one, one question. When you talk about the reduction of educators, please tell me that you're not getting rid of anybody in the music or arts department.
Okay.
There's always the first to go, and I'm serious about this. I just wanna make sure. If, if I may, if you look at the total F T Es twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, there really isn't a reduction, there's a slight increase. Right. I think part of the numbers falling in the educator co- category is that they were counted as educators in the previous year, but they're not part of the educator retirement system. And so we pulled them out to be more, um, true to the actual category and called them other in fiscal year twenty-two. Okay, my heart is no longer palpitating, thank you.
And not to say that they weren't previously considered other contracts, it's just that they weren't tracked that way in previous years.
Okay. They were, they were other contracts, but somehow they got folded into the educators. Okay, so there are not nine teachers that are not gonna be, okay. No. That makes me feel bad.
And I have to say, I am an artist myself, and I, I am very happy to hear that answer. Thank you for asking it, Peg. Um, I have nothing on this particular page, but I do wanna go to the school's actual budget. And I'm gonna bring that up now. So that if, a lot of it is to get, uh, I know all of this was presented to the school committee, and it's here for people to read. But I'm going on to look at the data that's provided on all of these sheets. Um, what did I wanna say here? It seems, if I read this correctly, I wanna make sure I'm reading it right, that we're, our total enrollment, this heading is this, this two twenty-one, twenty-two, is fourteen seventy-five, up one person. Um, so I guess I'm happy to see that numbers aren't falling crazily because of the pandemic, but you just said, Alison, that we were down a hundred people. So how does that jive with this? Um, I'm happy to hear, see this number, but I'm curious.
They were lost between, between, um, nineteen twenty and twenty twenty-one, if, if you look at the totals.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess I see here and here, okay, there you go.
Yeah.
But at least we didn't lose any between these. And this is, given that people have just gone through this, and I'm sure you're doing summer school and everything you can, you still expect this enrollment figure for next year? Is that what, as an estimate? You don't know until September.
That's what we base the budget on. I have a feeling, I mean, since we've been back, um, since early April, we're back full in-person. Um, we're tracking our numbers, and every week we have more students come back to us.
From remote into the school?
Yeah, well, from, from being out of, homeschooled or in private school, they're coming back.
Okay.
So they're all of a sudden reappearing.
I was heartened, I was heartened to see there's seventy million dollars out there for summer school, and I, I have a feeling a lot of people need it.
So just to, just to be clear, Dan, for the public.
Yes.
And, and Alison, I think you say this somewhere, that you're virtually using the numbers from this year. And like, if you're in kindergarten this year, that number moves to grade one. If you're in first grade this year, that number moves to the number in grade two.
You gotta use some.
The way I looked at it.
Yes.
So that makes total sense, thank you.
So, so that was for the budget, but what you're saying is you might see a little bit better, or may, you know, maybe that number will hold true, and that would be great. And maybe it might inch up a little bit, that would be great.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Okay. And, and then the two grades that are always a little bit more of a guess than the other ones are kindergarten, kindergarten and pre-K.
Yep.
Because it's based, we, we base it off the, uh, history and census, but things happen. And, uh, that always, um, varies more from our guess in this document than the other grades.
Okay, moving on to the next page, and let's, um, this is the page I hate to see. Uh, this total city assessment for twenty-one. Um, choice city assessment and charter city assessment, two million dollars. And we're only recovering seven hundred and fifty-two, if I read that right, and tuition in. Um, I'm kind of hoping that our new schools will attract more people if they think it's facility related.
Yes.
Because I have to say, I'm proud of, well, I'm proud of Kelly Brown and we the people. And, and they can't say we don't have the ability to educate their kids. So I'm kinda hoping that changes, and I don't know if you have anything to say about trends moving forward. But this figure, it, it's just too bad. I, I think the state mechanism is wrong, I don't know how to solve it, but, uh, it's just disturbing to me. And that's just a comment, but I don't know if you could.
No, I, I agree with you. I think that one of our greatest challenges, um, is related to the number of students that are leaving East Hampton, and for some of them, it is, facilities do play a part in that decision-making process. For, there may be a myriad of, um, decision points for families, including childcare, and, you know, their, where they work, or, you know, and sports. And there's a myriad of reasons people leave, um, a school district. But I think we will be able to recoup, particularly, um, in the K eight realm. Uh, I think starting as early as next school, this coming school year, with, um, middle school students moving into the new building.
I, I imagine those hundred-year-old buildings aren't attractive to parents, so I'm kinda hoping that changes. Do you have anything on this, uh, page, Peg?
Yeah, again, for the public, I think it's important to understand some of the statistics here, and I think it's also typifies the outrage of these numbers. So when I did the math, and Dale, keep me honest, uh, from fiscal seventeen to fiscal twenty-one, the number of kids who are chartering out went up seventeen, more than seventeen and a half percent. But the cost went up almost thirty-one percent between seventeen and twenty-one. For choicing out, we actually have fewer kids choicing out, but it costs twelve percent more for those kids who are choosing out. And the total assessment is up twenty-one percent to the city from seventeen, cuz I'm a geek with numbers, that's why I did this. And the choicing in, while up, it has gone up six and a half percent, uh, our receipts have gone up fifteen percent, so yay that. But the other stuff is incredibly expensive, and it keeps going up and up and up to hit to the city. So, um, I just wanted to get those numbers out there for anybody who's watching this later on. The, the, the other thing that might be helpful in terms of understanding the numbers is the base amount that comes in or goes out for a choice student is five thousand dollars. And then if they require, um, special services, it goes up from there. So it depends on who's going in and out that, um, affects how much it costs or how much revenue comes in. Five thousand dollars is the base, though. And, and if I look at, if I look at the numbers, the average has never been five thousand dollars. It's, it's over six, and it looks like in twenty twenty-one, the average was almost seventy-five hundred dollars per student. That's a lot.
Is that transportation, Dale?
Um, no, it's, it's, um, specialized services that a student might require. Could be transportation. It could be also, um, other kinds of special services that they require because of their learning needs. Um, but the, um, point that, um, I think is important to understand is it's, the base is five thousand for choice. For charter, it's somewhere between fourteen and eighteen thousand dollars per student.
And is that a formula? How do they determine that?
The, the charter rates are approved by the state.
They're determining that's what it costs to educate a child?
And it's interesting that we, we don't spend anywhere near that rate.
I was gonna say, I don't know where they come up with these figures, cuz I think charter schools get state money, don't they?
Right, right, but, um.
It's not like we're giving them all the money.
For the city, eh, to, to lose students to charter than it is to choice, I guess is the point that I'm trying to make.
Well, that goes to my comment about how the hell they decide how to charge us for charter, so anyway.
Yeah.
Anything else on this?
Just, if I could just make one other point.
Yeah, sure, sure.
Um, for F Y twenty-one, for choice in, you'll see the number is significantly less than the prior few years. We made a conscious decision this year to close our doors to any new school choice slots because of COVID nineteen. There were risks associated with bringing in children from other communities. And we really, we kept our doors closed. It was a safety, um, issue in East Hampton. And our, both our unions and our school committee, um, agreed that this was not the time to be bringing in students from other communities, predominantly communities that were in the red, like Chicopee and Holyoke, and having them in ours, in our schools. Um, back in the, in the fall, when we thought we were coming back at some earlier point in time. So that's why our number this year is lower for choice in, not because we didn't have the opportunity to have the number higher. We got asked a lot to take more kids in. So that number, I feel very comfortable in saying to you that that number will increase again next year. But we specifically kept our numbers closed this year.
That's a great point. Uh, and I imagine if you have someone who's already enrolled from Holyoke, you can't kick them out because of COVID.
No.
These are new people.
Yes.
Okay. All right, anything else, Peg, on these, these, this page?
Oh, yeah, who pays the vocational tuition? That's built into the school district's operating budget.
Yeah, it's a part of our budget.
So again, the folks who go to the vocational places, it looks like it's in the seventeen thousand dollar range per student, is that right? Did I do the math correctly?
Yes, yes, it's actually, it's a little higher than that to go to Smith-Vogue. Um, I think it's eighteen something, Dale, do you know the exact amount?
It's around eighteen-five for Smith-Vogue.
And it's a little, it's less for C-Tech.
Okay.
And, and their boards determine that, right?
There's a, um, there's an additional charge for any student who has an individual education plan of about forty-five hundred.
Okay.
And that's determined by their, the schools, the boards on those two schools.
We don't set those, yeah.
Not by the state or something.
The state does approve them. The board proposes them and the state approves them.
Wow, okay. I mean, I think vocational education is important, it just seems a little bit out of balance, but that's just me. Moving on to the next page. Uh, this is a graph, I don't have any questions, but it, it's pretty telling. Do you have any questions on this graph, Peg?
Uh, yes, on the graph, um, well, if you scroll down, Dan, to the table.
Okay, good.
Um, I just, so is the tuition to other districts all the stuff we just talked about on the other page? Is that what two million, two point one million is? It is vocational tuition, and then it's any, um, students with special needs whose needs can't be met in our programs and need to be tuitioned into other programs.
Okay.
Anything else, Peg?
Nope.
All right, moving on. Um, what are we seeing here, uh, if you wouldn't? If you'd tell me, uh, Alison. These are just revenue, revenue graphs?
Yeah, if you just scroll down, yes. So these are the different accounts that we, that come in to the district. We have this, our school choice money, that's choice in to the district. Circuit, circuit breaker is a formula-based, um, amount of funding that is related to some of our most significantly, uh, needy special ed students. That's, um, am I describing that correctly, Dale? It's funding that we are reimbursed for really exceptional expenses due to certain, um, special needs students.
I was gonna ask the question, thank you. I'm just curious, why do they call it circuit breaker? Cuz that always throws me for a loop, I mean. You have no idea?
Well, I mean, the way I think about it, and Dale will correct me, there's a certain amount of money that a school district is reasonably, um, responsible for. And then anything over that, you kind of trip the circuit, and that's when the state kind of reimburses you for these exceptional expenses. That's how I.
A, a, a percentage of them, yes.
And that formula is determined by the state.
Yes.
It is, ev- every year they determine how much is the reasonable amount per student, and how much of a percentage they will reimburse you for anything over that reasonable amount, depending on the budget they pass.
And that money that they send us is not really, um, it's not a slush fund. It's to be used for special needs in our district. So, um, revolving accounts, you see zero this year, which may seem like an anomaly. But, um, since we went into remote learning last spring, we didn't collect fees from students. We didn't collect parking fees or athletic fees, bus fees. We didn't do any of that because families had enough on their plate. So we took in zero in our, um, revolving accounts this year. And then federal and state grants.
Now, those grants, your usual grants, not COVID-related grants? Like every year you, you apply for and get grants of some kind?
Yes, primarily, they're, they're called our entitlement grants.
Excellent. Anything on this, Peg?
Nope.
The other thing, if I can just mention and remind us also, in terms of the circuit breaker, is that, that fu- those funds we earn in this year, but we're not reimbursed until the end of the year. And so really, that money then is there for the following year. So that it, that's where we always have to have more money on reserve to pay for the costs that happening. And so that's why there's that cycle that happens, and that's where the term reserve funds comes from too. It's, it's about keeping the money for, uh, the future year.
Okay.
Thank you, Marion.
And if I can, um, piggyback on Maren's comment, which was a really good reminder for all of us, is school choice is the same way. I think we get school choice in, in two installments, the revenue in, we get some in March and some in June. But we can't spend it until we have it and it's audited, so it's used in the following year, also reserve.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Maren. Offsets. Um, you wanna just explain this, Alison?
So with, um, our budget that we ask you for, um, that we get from the city is one piece of what we need to operate our schools. So above that, we need to offset, um, our expenses through some of, using some of the money in our, in our, um, reserves. So, uh, we take, predominantly, we use, um, a lot of choice funds and grants to pay for, um, about one point three million dollars of our staffing. So that's above what the city of East Hampton gives us. We need another one point three million to staff our schools at a minimum. Um, purchase of services, um, school supplies, materials. Again, we use grant funds for that. There are no, um, grant funds that are not specifically used for, uh, it could be testing supplies, it could be curriculum materials, anything like that. Professional development, you know, our teachers contractually have to have, um, professional development every year to keep up their licenses. So we, uh, use a lot of funds for professional development, both in-house and to sun people, to professional development, like through the collaborative in North Hampton. Um, and then special ed tuition, you see that circuit breaker again? We use circuit breaker to help pay for some of those. We use circuit breaker to help pay for some of those special tuitions that Dale remarked upon um in earlier, on an earlier page, um, when we send students out of district because we cannot appropriately meet their needs within the school district that we um, so we have to support them by sending them outside of the district.
Thank you. Very good explanation. Peg, do you have anything on this page?
Just, I just wanna, so essentially, your operating budget is nineteen point two million, is what this is telling me.
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, that's a great comment, Peg. Thank you.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Yes.
Moving on. Uh, I think these are just narratives on grants. I don't think there's any more numbers. Are there more numbers?
Yeah, well, there's the details.
Well, do we?
If you keep going down, Dan, there's some details.
I, I don't have, this is the overall detail. It tells us where things are down, obviously. You're down two point five percent. A lot of departments are, police departments down three percent. So you're not alone in this, and we, we know that we, we everybody is suffering, and I think the conservative need for the mayor is there because we just don't know what's gonna happen with our budget coming forward. I don't have any questions on these details, Peg, do you?
I, I, just some things that stood out, and I'm just.
All right, tell me where to go.
Um. Are you on, so, okay.
I'm on the general operating budget and.
Go to the one that has contract service staff dev systems. It might be the next page.
Help me out, Dale, if I said here?
Stop, yep.
Okay.
So the next line has a reduction of ten thousand dollars. The one below it has a reduction of eight thousand. I, before you go detail by detail, I'm not asking for a detail by detail. These are just numbers that stuck out, and I wonder, and like farther down, instructional tech hardware at Whitebrook, down thirty thousand. I, I'm just curious, are those somewhere else? Or truly have we just slashed the budget, thirty thousand dollars on some of these line items?
No, we are anticipating being able to use either. Well, in, in, in the case of technology, it's honestly recognizing what um comes in the way of technology by virtue of the new building. Things that we would normally be paying in our operating budget. We know that the new building project has an allotment for technology that will cover some of those things.
Excellent. That's excellent.
That explains the technology. In terms of the staff development, supplies, and course reimbursement, we um recognize that some of the um COVID relief money is for supporting staff in, in that area, and we've reduced the operating budget, knowing that we can tap those funds outside of the operating budget.
Okay, and then two pages down, Dan, uh, we're not, I'm not gonna, I'm truly not gonna put you through a line by line.
But if there's something on these.
What struck me, hang on, Dan, but what struck me was the next page where you've got Principal Center, Principal Pepin, and it's down thirty-six thousand dollars. Is that the same kind of response? You're gonna fund that a different way?
Um, we are. We are going to fund it a different way, and, and what I would add is a little sort of asterisk comic with, comment with that. We did this in some lines, in places that we know the next year, we have some savings coming to us as a result of consolidation.
Okay, I'll just, I'm gonna leave it at that, because that was kind of my assumption, and um, so thank you for validating.
You're welcome.
If there's anything on these lines, Dale and Allison, you wanna point out, just tell me where to go. Otherwise, I'm, you know, this is Maple. And I assume when you say Maple, you're talking about the current Maple School. We're not calling that school Maple. We're calling it Mountain View, which is a great name, by the way.
And the new school is Mountain View, yeah.
The, the, the only comment that I would make, and I think, again, um, you've said a couple of times that um for the public, is um when we did the public information campaign for the building project, we spoke about the ability to capture some operating savings once we were in that building. And um what we've done is reduce them in the fiscal year, the upcoming budget, fiscal year twenty-two, some of them, and, and are going to pay for them out of other sources, knowing that we don't need to build them into the budget in fiscal year twenty-three. So some of them will be captured in the fiscal year twenty-two budget, and the rest will be captured in the fiscal year twenty-three budget. But not all of them will be in the fiscal year twenty-three budget, as some people might have expected.
Okay.
Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
Absolutely.
That is, yeah.
And I would add, I would add to that, our thinking behind that was for all of the COVID-related dollars, we don't want to fall over a funding cliff at the end. In other words, we don't want to add things that we cannot maintain and then have, then in a few years from now, when the money's gone, we have to lay, you know, lay people off or cut programs. We don't want to be in that place, so we're trying to strategically think about the next few years and kind of lay it out to avoid a funding cliff.
Here's the special education budget. It's always curious to me. Um, I know it's absolutely necessary. Is there anything on this you wanna bring up, uh, Allison or Dale? Uh, it, it's, it's quite a lot of information, and obviously you have to do it. Pete, things like speech pathology and everything. So I don't know. It, it's just, to me, it's, it's, it's amazing. Here's a, here's a big increase right here, for instance, and I'm just curious. If, if you wanna say anything, I just know it's necessary, and I really don't have any question on it. I just want the public to know that special education is very important in our community, and it costs.
It does.
As it should.
It, it does cost a lot of money. Um, and um I, I would, I would say, I think you were looking at the first line of that with the director's position. So we cut an administrator. I think it's important for the district to know, uh, for the audience to know. Um, Dale, when did we cut the nurse director?
This, the beginning of this year.
Yeah, so we cut the nursing director, but we're, you know, supposed to have a nursing director. We're by law supposed to have that position, so we paid a stipend, or, or we bumped up the special ed director's salary just a little bit to have her oversee the nurses, which is not a great substitute. Um, but when you get down to a place where you're cutting positions, you can't cut only teachers. Everybody, you know, you have to share the pain equally, so that was an administrative position that we had to um find a way to live without.
I have to apologize. I just read the, the, the head of the column, the year-to-date, and I thought this was a drop in the salary or a big increase.
Oh, no, no.
I misread that. It's ninety-five and it's ninety-seven. Okay, forgive me.
The other thing I think it's important that people understand relative to special education, it's very important, it's very expensive. The other thing is, there's not a lot of discretion. It's a, it's an entitlement by law to provide all of these things. So um it, it's, it's not like people are deciding to do this or not. They're obligated to provide these things by law.
Okay, you have a lot of mandates like that, I imagine.
We do. It's special ed more than anywhere else.
Special ed, more special ed. Do you have anything on this, Peg? I don't.
No, except I recall at the beginning of this, and maybe I just dreamt it, but at the beginning of this conversation, when we were talking about staffing, did I see that special ed was gonna go up, the number of people? Did I see that on that first slide we did, or was that even articulated as a separate line item?
I don't think it was separated out.
Yeah, I don't think it was.
Then never mind.
Okay, well, that's all of this. I wanted to do something else for the public because I want the public to know that the city of East Hampton and supports these schools, and I'm glad we do. This is a percentage that I asked Jen to put together, percentage by sector of the budget. Thirty-seven percent of the budget is of the standard operating cost of the school of, out of our city budget is paid here. Um, the gray is schools. And if we look at all of the benefits totaled, it comes to twenty million dollars, and that includes all the benefits related in it. It's forty-four point seven five, forty-five percent of the budget. And I'm not saying that, that I have a judgment on that, other than to say, yes, we have to spend that. Um, our future is our kids, and, and we're educating them right, we're doing a good job. And, and if we're spending that money, we have to. But anybody that questions, are we spending enough? We're doing what we can, and we're spending a lot. That's all I'm saying. And we're building new schools, and I think the city actually agrees with this because they voted to build those new schools. So I just wanted the public, if they're watching this, they can see this slide um and know that we are doing what we have to do for schools. And I don't know if you have any comment on this, but I just wanted the public to have this kind of graph, and I wanna thank Jen for providing it.
And I, I think if you're looking at this pie chart, again, referencing the public, the piece of all of those other line items that are added to the proposed thirty-seven point four come from that rust-colored pie piece across from the gray, and that's the the retirement money and the health benefit money and all that money that's in the budget for the city employees and for the school employees. And what Dan is saying is, it's part of that twenty point six nine percent, and it is all encompassing of the thirty-seven percent. And that makes up the monies that the school uses. But I acknowledge, and I think it's a fair statement to say that operating budget at seventeen million and all of the, you know, health, which is incredibly great and awesome, but the operating budget is still kind of the critical number that um we still need to be looking at, I think, overall going forward. But I do appreciate the fact that, you know, from a city budget perspective, forty-five percent of the budget is allocated to the schools. So um, you know, it certainly is a lot, but I think as you guys, obviously, it's, it's never gonna be enough. Um.
And I, I have to say that Maren and all of the school committee advocate for the schools as they should, but I have to fight for the schools as well. When the public asks me, why do we spend so much?
Yeah.
There's not that many people that use the schools. And I gotta say, it's your future. It's the kids that we want to live and grow in East Hampton. And as we have done so well in, in making East Hampton a great place to live, we wanna educate those kids so they'll stay here. And it's just, it's just protecting our future. I can say everything about education. I'm reminded of a great line that Aaron Sorkin wrote for West Wing about schools are everything, and it was, it, it's a line that I always use when people criticize how much we spend on schools. Uh, why aren't we paving the roads? I said, God, please, don't start. It's just, you guys are doing what you can with a limited budget, as are all of our department heads, and, and we appreciate it. So we will be voting on this as a finance committee on the twenty-sixth. I can tell you, this council is not looking to cut anything, but uh if there are questions um from any of us, we might ask you to come back on the twenty-sixth of the month, the finance committee vote. But we do request that you be there on June second for the public hearing for the entire uh council, and we'll be asking you to give a brief summary of the school's budget and everything, and that'll be there for you, Dr. Leclerc, and thank you very much. Anything else from anybody on this, on the education budget? Okay.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Thanks, Maren.
Uh, we're gonna go to, back to the budget, and we're gonna go to Omar. So you know, we already did Unclassified, because school started late. Um, so we missed that. If you have questions on Unclassified, you can probably uh call us. I'm sorry, buddy.
No, that's right.
Already did it. Uh, debt is on page one fifty-one, so we're dealing with debt now. So again, Jen, I'm gonna be asking you to explain some of this stuff for the general public. Um, this is debt and interest, and what we're seeing here is principal. What we pay in principal for all of these loans. And so the public knows the word excluded refers to a voted debt exclusion override. In other words, the public voted to pay for the high school and new Maple School. They voted, and that's why this is so high, and this is the amount of principal we're paying next year on the school. Exclusion, exclusion means when it's done, the tax rate, tax rate should go down, because that's a lot of money, and they're paying it. Um, enterprise refers to uh bonding and borrowing for the sewer and water department, so the people know. So I don't know if you wanna say anything about this. It's a, it's interesting. Um, the amount is less, and I guess it's because as we pay things off, it goes down. And with your mortgage, it's the same thing, right? You pay your big interest upfront. They get their money first, in case you get a lottery winning and you wanna pay it off. Is that, is that a fair statement for?
In most cases, yes. It, it, it all depends on how the bond is structured because, you know, cer- depending on what you're using it for, there can be other, um, there can be other ways to structure it. Some are, are, you know, um, I believe, I wanna say, and again, I wasn't here when the, when the um school project was voted and the bond was set up. But that was, you know, front-loading it was so that it would kind of take the sting out over the years. Um, you know, so they're, they're definitely structured so that they are as easy to uh deal with in the budget as possible, but yet still.
They're as budget-friendly as they can be.
As, as, as much as they can be, yes. Um, and this, this year, they actually, the amounts, the total amounts dropped significantly. If you'll notice, the, all the little dashes are, where there isn't a dash in the budget twenty-twenty-one column, though that means that those were final payments of those, so those are now falling off the books, which, you know, is a good thing because we had a, a pretty hefty debt schedule. Um, and, you know, to kind of see that drop away is definitely, in my opinion, a good thing.
And that's why this figure is down.
Exactly. Yes.
Uh, does any of the other councils have questions on debt and interests here, on the uh bonding?
Jen, on principal temporary loans, there's a, the six hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollar one, what was that for?
That was, well, uh, temporary loans are, um, they're called bands, a bond anticipation note. Um, and last year, there was, um, we had a ban that was out from the prior year for like, I think it was one point two million. And it, it had been budgeted to pay down like five hundred and ninety-four thousand or something like that last year. So doing the twenty-one budget, um, I budgeted to pay the rest of it off on the six ninety-seven, and uh.
You know what it was for?
I, I can easily get my hands on what it was for off the top of my head. I can't remember.
Yeah, I, I'd be curious on that.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, Omar, anything on these two?
Nope.
Okay. Um, I wanted to ask a question of this statutory debt limit. These are um, I wanted to, I was saying, is limited by state law. So the public understands, and actually, so I understand it. The EQV is the e- equalized valuation. Just explain what this figure is and what this figure is, and what this all means, because we have a statutory limit on how much we can borrow. Is that what this is all about?
Yes. Yeah.
If you can explain this paragraph, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. Um, well, more or less what it's saying is that Mass General Law establishes that, you know, we have to contain our debt so that it is um five percent, uh, yeah, I'm sorry, five percent of our total equalized valuation. The EQV is, as it says in here, it's something that's determined by the um, the Massachusetts Department of Revenue. And they redo it every two years. Um, yeah, every other year. Um, and so this, it says uh twenty twenty, um, because it won't be done again until twenty-two. Um.
What is EQV? Is that based on properties?
Yes.
An evaluation of the real estate in this city?
Mm-hmm.
And this is a billion dollars. We're looking at almost two billion dollars here, right? That, that's a comma at the end here.
Yeah, yeah. So that, so that, Jen, is. So that, Jen, is all of the properties, all the valuations of the property, the assessments based on, and that's the taxes that we expect. It's based off of, those are the, those are the properties. And from there, we get property taxes assessed and those come into the city. Obviously, we don't get $1.7 billion of taxes. We get a.
That's the value of the property we can tax.
Right, right.
Is that correct? But does that include Williston, big property that, or other properties that are excluded?
That I don't, I, I am not sure. I would have to read the, the determination in the MGL.
Well, that's actually in our favor because doesn't that increase this?
Yes.
So if we want to borrow more, that, that figure right there is important to have.
I will say that if you go to the division, Massachusetts Division of Local Services, there is, there's information and you can pull up the equalized value calculations that are done for each municipality. So, you know, there's, there may, I'm not sure because I've never really looked, but there may be some layman's terms, you know, like for the public, if they want to kind of look into this deeper, see what, you know, where it comes from and why. Because I kind of find Mass General Law a little bit dry.
So we're allowed to go as high as 88 million, but we're only at 55 right now?
Correct.
Is that what that's saying?
Yes.
I guess that's good.
Yeah, you don't want to be at your, at your limit.
And this is a long-term debt chart.
That's more or less just showing how it's getting paid down over the next.
20 years?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I don't have any more questions. Is there anything on this that the counselors have? Debt and interest and this, what do they call this? Amortization? Is that a right term?
Yep.
Took me 25 years to learn these terms. Okay. To me, I guess we're in good shape with our debt and our interest. Mayor hasn't said anything tonight. I don't want to skip over you, Mayor LaChapelle, if you have anything about all this, but I think our debt is in good shape.
I would, I would agree. And this, you know, we planned very carefully for the big bonding of the school. We do have some debt obligation coming up or, or anticipated with the final bond for the school as, as well as a diff on the district improvement financing with Ferry Street. So, you know, we will be talking with the council about additional debt that will not be anywhere close to that 5% limit. But, you know, there is, is stuff. There's also, I would also just remind folks and Jen, if I'm incorrect on this, please let me know. But if we were to do bonding based on our DPW enterprise accounts, that would count, that would count against our debt limit as well as any bonding we do through CPA for city, for city space. So it counts towards that, that levy. So we're really mindful in the treasurer's office, tax collector, auditor, assessors around what that 5% is and where, and where we're going. The total land value in the city right now is projected to continue to increase at what I would say is a atypical historical percent. And that will not last forever and we, and we need to think about that as well. Because if property values, you know, not necessarily even go down, but it flattens inflation and cost of living does, it just never flattens. So there, there's also, you know, you can, we have a lot of things to celebrate as far as our land, total land value. But that will not be the case forever. And, you know, we, I was concerned about fiscal year 22 when I spoke to you, it seems like decades ago. And the pandemic has changed that greatly and with the influx of federal and state money, I, I think it's just a postponement of what we'll see as, as inflation. And, and my, I guess my renewed concern would be fiscal year 25.
So you alluded to like the bonding for the DPW. I am curious. We pay for a lot of our bonding out of general fund. But enterprise bonding, CPA bonding, those are separate revenue streams, but they are not, Jen, considered separately, even though they are revenue streams that are totally different.
They're, all of those that we just looked at are out of the general fund. So it's the.
Well, the 88 million we're allowed now, say. That still, if we bond for the DPW, it goes against, that's what the mayor's saying.
Yes.
It's curious to me because the enterprise money is separate. It's used, it's supported differently, but okay. I was just curious.
A counselor, Riss, but, but the bottom line is if the enterprise fund went to zero, the city is still obligated to pay those bonds.
That makes total sense. Yeah.
So, so for instance, we would do a bond for enterprise, let's say of $1 million. And that would be count, that amount and the payment amount is calculated on what we expect from enterprise receipts. For some reason, those receipts don't equal what we thought the payments would be. The city is still obligated to make those payments.
That makes total sense. Counselors, you have any other questions?
I don't. No.
Omar, I would like to, since you're here, we didn't make a motion on the two minutes that we did that were submitted by Counsel Coniff. I have no problem with those minutes. We wanted to wait until you were here in case you had anything to say about those minutes. If not, I'd like to make a motion to approve April 28th and May 12th minutes as submitted by Counsel Coniff, if you would make that motion.
A move.
Second.
So we have a motion to approve the minutes from April 28th and May 12th. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none. Counsel Coniff?
Aye.
Counsel Gomez?
Aye.
And Counsel Riss says aye. Thank you very much. Meeting adjourned. Our last meeting, we have two meetings left, but the budget hearing is on the 20th. What was that? Did I miss the comment?
We're just adjourning and you're still talking.
Well, we have another meeting. I just want to make sure we remember that we have a meeting on Thursday. Okay, thank you all. Pennsylvania worked.
There you go.
All right, bye-bye.
Bye.
Bye.